Okay, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Good evening and welcome. My name is Cecil Leonard, and we will call things to order since it is now seven o'clock. Before we get started, I've got several housekeeping details I want to go over. But first, let me say that the PowerPoint presentation is up on the town website. So if you want to look at it or print it, you can do that at your leisure. Also, I want to add that this, in essence, is a draft. What we finally come up with may or may not be what we see tonight. What we're going to do tonight is do a report-to-date. So, having said that, I want to cover several things. First off, I want to introduce my fellow commission members. Over here on the far end is Frank Marshall, Richard Joslin, Diane Harris, Bob Cooy, Deborah Polish, Stanley Zabanski, and Ray Maderos hiding over there behind the pole. And stationed at her duty post with the laptop is Laura Eppke. And I want to thank Laura in particular, but also Deborah, for putting the PowerPoint together. Now, before we get started, I also want to thank all the people that have come before you: the town officials, different volunteer boards, members of the public, and particularly the town administrator and finance director from Portsmouth, who were kind enough to share a good part of one of their few nights off to come over and talk with us extensively about what is good, bad, and ugly of their process. And given the fact that those two gentlemen rarely get to stay home, it was really good of them to spend as much time as they did. I want to go over a few guidelines. The first thing I want to make clear is the purpose of tonight is not to debate whether the town financial meeting should be kept or not kept. The reason for that will be clear as we move through this a little bit. We're taping this for later broadcast, so I'm asking that if anybody wants to make a comment, that they find a microphone, either here at the podium or over at the table. Because if you just ask from your seat, the people that will be seeing it later on television can't hear you. If you're just absolutely not interested in coming up, what I can do in those cases is I can repeat your question for you. But I'd much prefer that you give your own question or comment. If it gets to it, I'll try to keep things moving with a five-minute time limit. I don't mean I'm going to have a stopwatch and at precisely five minutes, we're going to have a big hook come out and drag you out. But we do want to keep things moving, because I'm a firm believer that the mind can only absorb what the bottom can endure. So much after one hour, things start to get a little bit fuzzy. Okay, I think the last thing I want to do is say we want to try to avoid talking back and forth in the audience. So again, because that is very confusing for the TV audience. Now, what we're going to do, from a process standpoint, is with the help of Laura, we're going to click through the PowerPoint relatively quickly the first time. And I want to do that so you get an idea of the flow of the information. If we did not hire a public relations firm to make a beautiful, smooth-flowing presentation. So what we have is a series of information points. And they don't always transition as smoothly as they would if we had really done a top-notch, expensive job. But I'm more interested in you seeing the information. So we'll go through it once, quickly, with a few comments, then I'll walk through it again. I would ask that you wait till we've gone through the second time. What I'll do is then ask Laura to start a third time. And if you have any questions or comments, we'll have the slide up while you're doing it. So with that, unless somebody has a question, if I've left -- I'll look at my commission members. Did I cover everything? Get everybody introduced? Everybody thanked? The important thing? Okay. Obviously, the first one is the announcement. I'm going to immediately eat the words I just said, and I'm going to talk about this one a little bit, because it's very short and we don't need to go back to it. The question is often asked, "Why are we here? Why are we proposing an alternative?" And the answer is, back in November of 2006, 55% of the voters said they wanted to look at an alternative. Forty-five percent voted no. So our primary task is develop a alternative to the financial town meeting. Secondarily, we're also going to consider other charter changes that we deem, based on the input we've received, merit attention at this point. Here's another slide where we probably won't spend a lot of time the next time through, and we just list all of the groups that we invited to come. The public was welcome at all times, and we sent formal letters out to all those other folks that came before us. Not all of them chose to appear, but that was their choice. Many of them did, and we appreciate that. Next. Okay, now here's one of the slides that we're going to go back to, because you'll probably have some questions. After hearing the input and also doing an examination of what the other towns and cities in Rhode Island do, and we also looked at at least one or two in Massachusetts, we eventually boiled it down to seven different alternatives. Okay, next. We then eliminated five of them, and we'll come back to this one. Next. We boiled it down to two. This is where we're at at the moment. And what I'll ask you when we come back to this slide is, did we miss anything? Is there another idea out there that we haven't condensed, picked up, or examined? Next. I'm going to show you a couple busy displays that talks about the present and proposed flow chart of the budgeting process. The reason we developed these two, and the next one is proposed, is because throughout the process, we heard comments from a lot of different people: the budget committee, the treasurer, in fact, two different treasurers, because we changed treasurers in the middle of things, the town administrator, the school committee. And one of the common themes was, right now, the whole budgeting timeframe is so long, and it gets very drawn out. Also, we finish up with our financial town meeting before the general assembly makes their final allocation of funds. So no matter how much work we do, doesn't do much good -- well, it does do a lot of good, but we still have a very big number, that is, the state aid to the school, et cetera, that we don't know. So we're guessing. And some years, we have pretty good information; other years, we don't. So that's why we got off on looking at the timeframe. Next. Here's a list of next steps, which we will spend more time on the second time through. And here are some other things we're considering. We have ten up there now. We have at least two others that may be added. Just because they're on this list doesn't mean they will survive. And I think that's the last one. Next steps. Okay. So, everybody got that? Any questions? None? Good, we're done. No, let's start over again, and we'll go back through this a little bit. I think this one speaks for itself. One of the questions that people ask us all the time is, "Well, why did 55% of the people vote for it?" And the answer is, we don't know. You all are the ones that voted, so you probably know. No, not till the end. Next. Here is just that list. The main thing is to see that we were inclusive. And we particularly worked on getting public comment. And of course, a lot of these bodies are the public; they're volunteers. And we listened, not always agreed, but we listened carefully to all the volunteer groups, because the volunteers are a huge part of our town government. The town wouldn't run without them. Or if we had to pay for all that talent, it would be quite impressive on the tax rate. So I again want to thank all those people that gave up their evenings to come and chat with us. Next one. Okay, now, here's one. Well, I'm going to move around here where I can see it a little bit. As I said, we took all of our input from different sources, including the examination of other towns, which, just as a point of information, 20 of the 39 towns and cities in Rhode Island, the budget is approved by the town council or city council. Actually, there is only really 37 bodies, because there's a couple communities are paired up, like Bristow and Warren. Fifteen of the 37 communities still have a financial town meeting. All of them, as you would expect, are in very small towns. So there's more town councils, city councils approving than there are financial town meetings. We rejected these six. One of the things that you'll see that's a common theme in there, and I'll talk about it a little bit, you'll see that on the all-day referendum, we said, "Well, there was no way to really amend any proposal that was put out there. It would be an up or down vote. It would basically be all or nothing." And we felt it was very similar to the financial town meeting, except it didn't have the advantage of any opportunity to amend the budget that was proposed. Town council approval with referendum failsafe, no budget committee. And let me jump. Elected officials approve budget with referendum failsafe. In other words, school committee approves school committee, council, council, treasurer, treasurer, clerk, clerk. We had to eliminate that, because A, it's illegal; there has to be a consolidated budget passed by a single entity. Number five, that's why we had six up there; we took them off the other one. Budget committee approve budget with referendum failsafe. In other words, instead of the budget committee making their recommendations to the town financial meeting, they would just be the final arbiter. And the reason we finally eliminated that, no day-to-day budget authority, in other words, they could have a minimal budget and not bear the responsibility of running the police department or the maintenance department, et cetera. Also, it would do away with their watchdog role. And then representative financial town meeting, we departed from that. Depends on too many volunteers, elected reps, and in essence, it is still a financial town meeting. You'll notice that a couple of these, the 2A, the 3, envision no budget committee. We had a spirited debate and a large amount of input, both in favor of the budget committee and opposed to the budget committee. There were very few neutral people, but there were a lot of people on both sides of it, feeling on the against side that they were a major contributor to the drawn-out length of time, that the budget committee was a good thing in the days gone by when we didn't have as many professional members of the town government. And the other thing is that roughly 85% of our annual budget is already contractually obligated before it even goes to print. Either the town council approves it, the school committee approves it, the voters approve bond issues, or -- where's Alex? Alex's favorite is, we have a mandate. Either the state tells us we have to do something, or the federal government tells us we have to do something. So by the time we really put the budget together, roughly, and it varies year to year, roughly 85% of that budget is already fixed by contractual obligations. So, on the positive side, and why we decided to keep the budget committee in the loop is they indeed serve as another set of eyes. When you have a $39, $40 million budget, it never hurts to have another set of eyes looking at the numbers. They, to a degree, are nonpartisan, and I say "to a degree" with no intent of disrespect, because they are human beings. And they do have their own opinions. So as much as any human being can be dispassionate, they certainly try to be dispassionate, and also, it is a nonpartisan body. One of the other problems that we have with the budget committee is it's tough to get people to run for it. But given all that, we still came down and said, "We want to keep that. They have a role to play." And once we said that, then we eliminated pretty well, almost automatically, those options that cut the budget committee out. So, at this point, here's where we're at. Month-to-date, year-to-date, I guess we can say, yeah, year-to-date, because we started last year. We're down to two alternatives, similar. Both of them, I want to be sure and stress, have a referendum failsafe. Those of you that paid attention to what Portsmouth had done, this is what they've gone to. And again, I want to say that the time we spent with the town administrator and the finance director from Portsmouth was very helpful, because they were willing to share the warts of their previous system. So, right now, we've limited it to two alternatives, one of them being the town council approve, which the majority of towns and cities in the state have that approach. And the reason for having them do it is they're accountable. Under both state law and, to a degree, charter and town ordinance, the town council is the senior body in town. They are responsible for the financial, the final financial decisions of the town. For example, a bond issue cannot be completed without the president of the town council co-signing it. To issue a bond takes both the town council president and the town treasurer. It's well-tested in terms of the number of towns and cities that use it. On the negative side, it would be more time required by the council. Now, some say, "Well, that would be okay, because the council would focus on their policymaking role more completely by doing that." And if you're among the cynics, shall we say, that think that the town council sometimes gets off on tangents and get into minutia that they ought not to be dealing with, having them working on the budget, which is a tough problem, would be a good thing. But it would be another time consumer. Also, the thought of having the town council control, excuse me, control the school budget doesn't set too well with some folks, principally because, under state law, the school committee has a lot of latitude on how to spend the money that's allocated to them. Now, we come back to the fact that 20 of our towns and cities do have the town or city council control the final school budget. But that's kind of a gray area, and it's a little bit against it. We then developed what we have come to call, for working purposes, the Grand Committee. Has a nice ring to it, the Grand Committee. And what we did there was assemble a group of elected officials. We said, three members from the town council, one who would be the council president, because that person by law is the chief financial officer of the town, one from the school committee, the treasurer, the town clerk, one representative from the budget committee, for a total of seven. That's not carved in stone. The only thing that's carved in stone is that if we would proceed with this, is we would have to have an odd number of people. In both cases, well, let me go finish up here. We would assemble a lot of expertise in that group. They would be representative of elected bodies and their budgets. In other words, when they passed the budget, they would be the ones that would be primarily responsible for carrying out that budget. So it wouldn't be a theoretical exercise to them. If they cut the budget in some area, they would be the ones that would have to live with a budget cut. On the opposed side is, would there be too many cooks trying to make the soup? And the process is untested. There is a couple towns that come close to it, but none that have exactly this. Next. Here is a very busy slide. And what I'm going to do is not try to put you all asleep. And what I'm going to do is use the wonder of color to help us get through this. The dates off to the left side, your left side, is what is mandated by the current charter. And you can see that for fiscal year 08, the process really started on December 23rd, which means that that was when the budget was promoted to the town side, submitted their budget to the town council, which means that the actual town departments were starting to work on their departmental budgets back in October or early November. It's pretty tough, because the fiscal year starts the 1st of July. So you're barely into the fiscal year, and if you're a department head, now you're starting the next year's budget process. Comes down through that process to the financial town meeting. Takes from, actually, October, November of a prior year, to, in this case, May 21st, to get the whole process done. So we have a lot of people tied up, doing a lot of work for a long time. So.
Yellow orange.
Yellow.
Well, that the financial town meeting is orange, and that the orange is what we change.
Yep, okay. Now, if we went to either of our alternatives, there would be a few changes. Notice that the budget committee, to the point where the budget committee would hold a public hearing, would be exactly the same as it is now. It would then go to where the body, whether it was the Grand Committee or the town council, our thought is that we would write into the charter that there would have to be a meeting with the count, the body, the budget committee, the school committee, to meet as a total group, which would be larger than the Grand Committee. The body would then adopt a preliminary budget, publish it, schedule public hearings, hold the public hearings, and adopt a budget. At that point, one of two things could happen. There would be a period of about 14 days, and again, that's not carved in stone, to where people could petition to hold an all-day referendum to change the budget that either of the two bodies, the town council or the Grand Committee, adopted. And again, we're piggybacking, to a degree, on the Portsmouth process. They're not the only ones. There's some folks over in South County have similar, but primarily, it's Portsmouth. Once the Board of Canvassers certified the necessary number of signatures, then we haven't decided. We've narrowed it down to either 5% or 10% of the eligible registered voters. 5%, there's roughly 11,000, so it would be like 550 to 600, and 10% would be about 1,000 people. Then, if there was a petition, if it was certified, then there would be an all-day referendum to decide on either accepting what the body has approved or to make changes. Now, there, we get a little fuzzy, because we're not quite sure, when we get down into the citizen's petition, exactly how we would handle the petition. Would we say they could change the total number? They could change a department? Could they change municipal and school, but not down to finer levels? We haven't got that far yet. Okay. Let's go on. Here's our next steps. Decide single alternative. Clarify, refine, shorten the budget process. Clarify disposal of town-owned land, which is an important function of the town financial meeting now. And in Portsmouth, they handle that with a referendum, no matter what. Look at the financial town resolutions, and if necessary, incorporate some of those into the alternative. We're going to have to come up with the help of our town solicitor with the language. Review all references. We're going to have to threshold out, pardon the pun, the threshold number of signatures, rules, et cetera, on what to do with the process, and then other tasks that are surely going to be required that we don't know about yet, but as we get closer, we'll stumble into them. Okay? Here are some of the other changes that may or may not make the cut, and I will add that down there, others that may develop. There's at least two that we know that are on deck, that may be included. Amend Section 310 to require X% of operating budget maintained in general fund. The treasurers, in plural, have recommended that the current 3% go up to either a 5% level or a 6% level, and that would be in increments over a several-year period. Clarify town administrator's role. Who should select department heads? Some of you will remember that that topic has been around for a long time. Add historic preservation advisory board, which, interestingly enough, the recently adopted comprehensive plan for the town has as one of its components. Add a design review. Again, that comes right out of the town comprehensive plan. Amend charter to transfer regulatory power from wastewater management to DPW. That's a continuum going back to when the previous charter change reduced the scope of the authority of wastewater management, and the financial town meeting made the decision to hire a wastewater superintendent, full-time employee in DPW. Amend Section 21210, having to do with the termination, suspension, and removal from office. Right now, department heads are entitled to a hearing before they can be terminated, and there is room for interpretation. It was reported to us by credible sources that at one point, three different lawyers looked at the language and came up with three distinctly different understandings of the language. So now, whether we can come up with something that everybody would agree to remains to be seen, but there certainly needs to be some attention paid to it. Modify 104. Right now, our charter says that the town council and/or, I believe, the school committee, but certainly the town council, can enter into cooperative agreements with the federal government, the state of Rhode Island, or subdivisions thereof. It's silent as to other states. That's a little bit of a problem, since all the folks up in North Tiverton that have sewer service, guess what? service, guess what? You're doing business with the state of Massachusetts, which is not mentioned in the charter. So almost for sure, that one is going to be modified. It'd be a very simple one, just to add the state of Massachusetts.
Cecil, each of these things that we're looking at may become individual questions on the, for the public as a referendum. These are, these are things we're thinking about, but people will get to vote on these individually, right?
Yeah, that's correct. That, the long one, section 504, 505, 1213, talks about temporary appointment of elected officials, and they conflict. All we really need to do there is to develop some consistent language. Modify budget process to allow for final approval as late as August 15th. That one is contentious, because what that would re, well, the good part of that would be that by the time we had the final budget, we would know what the general assembly was going to do with the allocations. How much they were going to give to school, how much in general, town and city aid. The downside of that is that the initial tax bill would have to be amended, which is okay, except that it requires a second bill going out. Not the worst things. It's a matter of, is it really worth knowing the final number to put up with the work of a second mailing? Now, the work of a second mailing is much less today than once upon a time it was, because as you all know, you can go to Sir Speedy, or Staples, or Kinko's, or other companies, and get stuff printed and mailed virtually overnight. So it's not the laborious process it was once upon a time. But still, it would take a duplication of effort. And then, like I said, there are a couple others. There's, for example, there's a reference in the charter about an industrial commission, and it cross-references a state law, and it appears that the state law that's being cross-referenced doesn't exist anymore. And it doesn't look like that serves any purpose. There's also a couple other things that people have proposed that we haven't had a chance to totally vet. So just because they're on there, that doesn't mean they will survive. One of our overriding concerns is that we don't want to have as many issues on this ballot, having to do with a charter revision, as we did the last time around, which I believe there was 34, something like 34 separate issues. So we want to keep that number small, and we want to focus primarily on the very important things. Here's just our deadlines, some of the important things. We'll have an official public hearing on or about April 23rd. May 21st, we have to hand off whatever we recommend to the town council for their consideration. Now, the town council, under the charter, can choose at that time to make any other change that they might propose. They historically have never fiddled with what a charter commission has given them, but they do have the right to put their own things on if they so choose. That's something that they haven't done very frequently, but it's there. Then finally, by August 6th, that's the deadline, that the board of canvassers have to have everything to the secretary of state, so it can be certified and printed on the ballot for November. Also in there, we will be putting together a voter information pamphlet, which will be mailed out before the election. So we have our work cut out for us. And we've pretty well said, starting on March 5th, we're not going to take any new, completely new ideas from any source, the public, what have you. Now, are we going to be draconian about it? And if somebody comes in on March 12th and says, you know, I've been thinking about this, and I have this really whiz-bang, super idea that's going to solve 50% of all the problems in the town, including a new method to make sure that we don't have a new town administrator every 26 months, we're probably going to listen to that idea. We're not going to say, ah, time's up, you know. So, but we want to have a cutoff, so we can start focusing on the work that we have and get all that stuff done. Tired just looking at it. So, let's go back, and then, now. I think that's, that's safe. Any, any questions or comments?
Just to let everybody know, we are going to keep meeting every Wednesday night.
Yep. And, well, unless we get really efficient and wrap everything up in the next couple weeks, which not much chance of that happening. Any questions, comments about that one? Pretty straightforward. Yes, sir. Mr. Bemis.
Venice.
Venice.
One of the things that I don't see as an alternative to the financial town meeting that I expected to see was to keep the present financial town meeting with an increase in the number of people, and use one of your alternatives as a backup for. For instance, jack up the minimum number from the present 301 to 1,000, or 1,500, making it what some people might refer to as a more democratic process, rather than allowing a small group of people to take over the finances of the town.
Let me, let me paraphrase his comment, so the TV audience can hear it, and basically is, why didn't we consider just enlarging the quorum number for the financial town meeting to make sure that there were more people involved, and then have some sort of an override situation? And the reason we didn't do that is because we did think about that. Interestingly enough, there was much more testimony to make the quorum smaller than there was to make it bigger, but we did consider that. And we came down on the fact that it's still a financial town meeting. The ballot issue said, develop an alternative to the financial town meeting, not tweak the current one. Right, wrong, huh? No, just a minute. Alex, I want to come back.
I don't miss any council meetings, and I know there's members of the council here.
Well, excuse me. Do you have any questions about this particular thing? Is that where we're going?
Yeah, it's about this right here.
Okay, well, it doesn't have anything to do with the council?
No.
Has to do with the vote?
But the talk at the time was, we had a problem getting a quorum. And what the council meetings, when it was gathering around, how this got written on the ballot is beyond me, because I've asked some council members, and they can't understand it either, was to try to find an alternative to get more people there. It was brought up to move the town financial meeting before the council let, to a Saturday, to give some people, the older people, a chance to get there. A lot of people want to go to bed at 8 o'clock at night. How this got on the ballot to replace the town financial meeting is beyond me.
Well, the question is, how did this get on the ballot? All I can say to that is, that was the language that was put on the ballot. Can I give a recap of every cross T and dotted I? No. I had some involvement in it, and I think that was a fair representation, but bottom line is, like it or not like it, that's what was on the ballot, that's what was ordered on. Ms. Epke.
You may just want to mention the alternative list that we're keeping, proposed fixes to the financial town meeting.
The, what Laura said was, I may want to mention the alternative list that we're keeping, and that's a secondary thing. And what we're doing as we go through, being pragmatic folks, and given the fact that the spread on that vote was only 10 percentage points, we're also keeping a running list of what we think are, would be good changes if the financial town meeting was retained. And why we're doing that, we're being a little bit presumptive, but what we're going to do, we're going to give that list to the town council, and after the vote in November of 08, if the financial town meeting is retained, we would hope that the council at that time would look at that list and see some of the things that might be worthwhile to modify the financial town meeting. One of them being, as Mr. Cody pointed out, perhaps change it to a Saturday. Now, obviously, the council has no imperative from us giving them a list. It would just be, here's what we think you might want to look at. Any other question? Let me, anybody else?
I'm still on the main topic. I'm strained from it. And Mike, I'm trying to understand why you have such tunnel vision with respect to the interpretation of clear alternative to the financial town meeting. Because the statement up here says, a clear alternative to the financial town meeting, I interpret that as saying, a clear alternative to the present financial town meeting.
Well, I would.
And a clear alternative to the present financial town meeting would be a financial town meeting that has an increased number of participants required, like 1,000 people, that would, if the required number does not show up, bounce back to one of the other two alternatives that you have picked. And all that would be necessary to do that would be to keep your two alternatives and add a third alternative, or a fourth, same financial town meeting with X number of required people, and if they don't show up, it reflects back to either A or B.
Okay. Again, to paraphrase, it was a question about why we didn't just expand the number of people required for a quorum. All I can say is, that was our collective judgment, like it or not. I would argue vigorously with the word tunnel vision, and I guess that's where we came to. Let's go to the next slide. This I don't, this is just information. We included everybody that exists. Next one. Okay, any questions about the other ones? Mr. Vermette way in the back.
I noticed that none of these alternatives that were considered, whether they be the ones you dropped or the ones you picked, they all have a referendum failsafe. Did you at all have any discussion, I'm not implying that you should, that you should, I'm just asking, did you have any discussion about, for example, to be a town council approval without the referendum failsafe, or any of the other ones, without, in other words, these bodies are elected bodies. Why did you feel it necessary to always add this referendum failsafe? It's almost as if you're implying somebody isn't going to do a job, and you've got to have something to, Congress passes a budget, you don't have an election after it if you don't like the budget. Or state legislature passes a budget, and you don't like it, they don't have an election after it. I'm just wanting to know what your logic is. I'm not suggesting it changes.
Okay, if I can paraphrase, again, his question had to do, why did we feel that we had to have a failsafe, a referendum, or what have you, when elected officials in just about every case was making the decision? And that's a good point, and we did talk about it. And frankly, the reason we did it, and I'll call on my fellow commission members if I misspeak, was we did it this way, because the overwhelming amount of public testimony we received basically said, for lack of tact, we don't trust the rascals, and we want to be able to overrule them. I'm sorry, I hope for the school committee members and the town council members that are here, I know they've heard that before, so I'm not hurting their feelings, but that was, that was why. There was just an overwhelming sentiment. And I would ask, now that's, if I'm.
I think a secondary, secondary to that was.
Would you use your mic, please?
Secondary to that was a very strong feeling that people wanted a way to still be involved if they needed to be. I mean, that definitely, there was that, well, what if we get the rogue council, the rogue grand committee? But we wanted to provide a way for people to feel like, you know, you can still be involved if you want to. And this was sort of the secondary consideration for that.
I would just suggest that if you're going to have that as an option, or if they're in all your options, that you have some idea of what the mechanics by which you would implement that is. Because just to throw that out, without an understanding of the mechanics of how you would implement it, is not very.
Let me just add to Cecil's comment. Bristol, Burrville, Cumberland, North Kinkstown, Portsmouth, South Kinkstown, Warren, and Westerly all have the citizen failsafe. So there it is tested, and there is language out there that does walk through it.
Yeah. And as I, as I, as I said when we were at that section, we haven't ironed all that out yet, but that, that will definitely have to be put together, and it'll have to be precise, and it'll have to be spelled out. And, and again, for the TV audience, the question was, you better be careful about how you have the referendum, because the devil is in the detail. And I'm, I'm taking great liberty in paraphrasing Mr. Vermette. Any other questions, comments? Yes?
My name is Jeff Karen. I had done some preparation work, some thoughts on all this with Cindy Nebergall, and we had, wanted to hand something out to the commission, and I wanted to speak to it. Didn't expect this rotated room tonight, so I kind of thought I'd be sitting at the table, but is that possible?
Well, come on up, and I'll give you the podium. Pass, pass that out.
Oh, I don't think we need the podium.
Well, yeah, you do, because the folks on the other side of that camera can't hear you.
Are you just for questions now, or you didn't want comments?
Nope, we'll, we'll take comments. We want to focus on, on all this, which is a very broad topic, so come on up. No, come on. Don't, don't give me the shy routine, Jeff. Plus, that'll give me a chance to step aside.
One of those two mics doesn't.
Did you get one of these? Well, many of you know me, I'm Jeff Karen, and this is Cynthia Nebergall. I think the, to go through some of our thoughts on this, I think the first thing we need to say is that the two of us are involved in town government, and that we're speaking individually as electors. That's an important point, because I don't want anyone to think that we're speaking on behalf of, you know, the boards and commissions that we're, we serve on. I'm trying to think where to start here. Like I said, I was expecting to sit at the table.
Cecil asked that we make comments, and it reminds me of the, my. It reminds me of something a colleague said to me once. Be careful what you ask how your elderly aunt is feeling, she might just well tell you. So Cecil, here it comes. You asked.
Well, I think the gist of it is, is one of the early slides showed that option one was, was thwarted because it was, there were a couple reasons. The one listed in the document was because it was very similar to the financial town meeting, and the second reason that I heard verbally was that, it was, because it didn't allow for amendments, that's what it was. And I think that amendment one, amendment one, option one, offers some real opportunity that may be overlooked, I'm not sure. And it, Cindy and I spent some time digging into possible mechanics related to that. Specifically, kind of, our paper here, it's just kind of listed as option one, and also option two and four, which are the two that have lived on. But if it's okay, I'll just talk to option one initially. The, it has several advantages. I have five bulleted out here. The first advantage of option one was that the electorate decides, as it does now under the current financial town meeting. The two, the two proposals that live on, obviously have smaller groups making those decisions. Now, just so everyone remembers, option one was the all-day referendum. That was option one, so everyone remembers. The other thing to note on that is that the town voters have previously twice refused to pass, to relinquish that control of the financial town meeting. I believe it's twice, at least once, in this sort of, of a charter commission thing. The second bullet I have for a reason for option one is that it would offer increased voter participation. In other words, we all know that the, the financial town meeting can be a two-hour experience, a three-hour experience, sometimes a two-week experience. So in, in the case of a referendum, if it was a ballot-type vote, there's three, three mini. So in the case of a referendum, if it was a ballot-type vote, there's three mini benefits to that that would increase voter participation. One of them is it uses less time for the elector. Secondly, electors can cast their ballots when they can afford the time, so you can do it at lunch, you can do it after work, in the morning, whenever. And thirdly, it would benefit because it would have the democratic process of the secret ballot inherent to it. A third option would be to...a third reason, I guess, well, let me put it this way. When I read number one in the presentation and saw that the definition of number one was that if it failed, then it would be level funded. And I think this is where the real opportunity lies, actually, and it's not so much in exactly that, but the concept would be that if you...first of all, if you do an all-day referendum, you are...you're forcing department heads, councils, budget committees, you're forcing all these people to really, really do the homework and do the diligence. And it's sort of like if they don't sell you a good package, or if they give you...if they don't have a good reason and rationale for the budgets they propose, then they're going to get level funded. Well, maybe level funding is a little bit dramatic and would cause wreak havoc in town government, but if the...if it were something in the 2% to 3% range as a default increase in the levy, then all of a sudden, the burden is increased on the people preparing the budgets to prepare a budget that justifies a 4% or 5% increase, not the default 2.5% or 3%, which was what it would be if it would fail. So he coded this vote, if it fails, boom, it goes up by the charter amount, which is 3% or 2% or some number. And if it passes, then the budget passes, and it moves forward at 4% or 5% or whatever that number may be. So the advantage to that is twofold. One, as I just mentioned, is that it would force department heads to have this 2.5% or...I don't mean to say department heads, but it would force people to really do the diligence to justify something over 2% or 3%, and do that homework there and sharpen the pencil. The other thing it does is that if it fails, you don't strangle the government. Obviously, we have contracts, we have things going on, we can't just, you know, level fund necessarily when we have all these obligations out there for increases. So it also alleviates the pitfall of level funding. So I think it's an interesting opportunity. And it took a little thought, actually, and Cindy and I bantered it back and forth, but it took a little thought, but it's an interesting way of sharpening the pencil, which if anyone knows me, I'm all about that. And let's see, I have another comment here. I have two more comments, actually. I've kind of rambled through a couple of them, but one of them was about amendments. And I heard Cecil say that there was no way for amendments to come forward and under the process of number one. And therefore, we had these other two options that we're living on. And the amendments, but what I heard was in the presentation, that that really still hasn't been addressed yet either. And I think that's a real thorny area, the whole topic of, okay, we got a petition, and we need to deal with it, and we have to have a mechanism in place. So I just said to myself, well, what happens if you get two petitions? Probably not going to happen, but what if you did? Now, how does it handle that situation? And so this construct of option number one would completely obviate that. And so anyway, that's another thought. The other aspect of it was is that the charter change, the charter change to implement number one is minimal, and so it increases the chance for voter acceptance at an election for the charter. So that was our thoughts. I didn't expect to be up here saying them, but...do you have anything, Cindy?
I guess I would just-
May I make a suggestion? We're looking at a chart that says the alternatives have been rejected, because we have the ones that you're considering. It's easier for us to follow the speakers.
They're really addressing things that have been rejected, so I think it's important that we have what they're talking about up here.
There it is, number one.
What appeals to me particularly is two parts about maintaining voter participation and what I just heard in the room about not trusting or, maybe more delicately put, trust but verify, and that the voters would still have an opportunity through a secret ballot to make their views known, and that wouldn't disappear. I don't think that it really is...it's not a meeting, and for me personally, that has a lot of attraction. Sometimes those meetings can be, well, long. And so voters can, you know, those who work all day and pay taxes and can make their views known, and it's not inordinately burdensome to do so. Secondly, it's simple, so that if there is a vote, all of the parties in town who are responsible for putting together budgets and approving them are know upfront that they have to really sharpen their pencils. There can't be any last-minute messing around with it, and it has to be rationally and reasonably sold to the taxpayers of the town ahead of time so that the vote passes. I think it...there's nothing like the prospect of a hanging to focus the attention, and so it will focus people on sharpening the pencil and making sure that the proposed budgets are rational, reasonable, and what all of us think the town can and should afford to do in every area. So I think it brings together both maintaining voter participation as well as a very simple process that might even improve the budget process without having to add in a whole more layer of bureaucracy and wrangling. And that's all I have.
Cindy and Jeff, I just...and you may not have thought through this, but in case you have, I just want to ask the question, whose budget do you envision being on this all-day referendum? The Budget Committee, the Town Council, the school...because right now, when you go to a Financial Town Meeting, the Budget Committee recommends...makes a recommendation, and there's four other amendments that can come to the floor. So whose budget would you envision being on this all-day referendum?
I'm working...I'm working...we're working off of what we got from you all, which says, same process as current with all-day referendum substituted for FTM. So I wasn't making any presumptions other than what's on your document.
Right. Yeah, I was assuming that the budget we would get was the Budget Committee budget. That's my assumption. I hadn't thought through those nuances that happened that night, meaning in the meeting, but...
And you see any...do you see that the referendum would be a vote just to accept or to reject it?
It would be simply a vote to accept or reject, yes.
Yes is the answer.
And if it fails, it's some number that your body picks as a percentage increase.
So again, for the TV audience, the answer was yes, but there would be, instead of a level funding, it would be a 2%, 3% bump up. Okay? Thank you very much. Mr. Bossom.
I kept alluding to secret towers. We don't have a secret town now, we have the end race. And I was wondering whether at some point we were trying to make it get out.
The all-day referendum would be at the polling places, so it would be a paper. Yes, it would be...you would go, just like we're going to go for the, hopefully on March 4th, so it would be a secret ballot. Yep. Any other?
Is there a proposal? Was there any amendments to be added to that?
Sure. No.
Are we on 2A and 2B?
Yep.
No, 1, I'm talking about 1.
Well, the...by having this slide up here, it's fair game. Anything, anybody wants to ask or comment about what's up that up on the wall right now, please do. And you can either come up, which I would much prefer, because I would like to have the larger TV audience hear your words as well as us, so...
Yeah, so I'm just wondering, what happens if your chart says reject it, but we have a proposal here that, you know, accepts?
That's why we're going to go back and contemplate what we're hearing tonight. That's why we wanted all these thoughtful people here. Let me tell you, it gets a little lonely when we come to the meeting, and I want to give credit where credit is due, to paraphrase something the council did, we should give two Golden Pillow Awards, and that's to Mrs. Sally Black and Ms. Joanna Ruda, who came to almost every meeting. I think they missed one because there was a conflict. Other than that, they were there, and sometimes the room echoed loudly. And so we really appreciate you being here and giving us your thoughts, because we have no delusions, I don't think any of us, that we are the smartest absolute people in town. We know there are a lot of ideas, and we wanted to make sure that we weren't going to run off a cliff.
So I can read into that top line, alternatives rejected so far.
That's right. That's right. And I think that the two folks that spoke had some very valid thoughts that we're going to give consideration to. Any other? Mr. Martin.
Following that saying, why, how would you be able to ask questions, specifics on a budget? Would there be a meeting beforehand, before you got the ballots, let's speak, or the referendum?
I would...picking up on the fact that we would come down through...can we get to the slide where the present budget process is? I would presume that the Budget Committee, before that ballot was made up, would still hold their public hearing, and that would be the case. Now, I'm told by people that in...many years ago, the Budget Committee public hearings were very well attended. Recent years, that's not so true for a variety of reasons. One of them being, I think, that people realize that a lot of the budget is already contractual obligations. But again, I don't pretend to know the answer. So to answer the question, which was, when would the public have an opportunity for input before it went on a general election ballot, it would be at the Budget Committee hearing, just like there's a hearing now. Is that right, Cynthia and Jeff?
Yes.
Okay. I don't want to put words in your mouth. Yes, sir.
Was it your idea that the referendum would be voted at all the voting places or at a central location all day long?
That would really be a decision between the Board of Canversers and the State Board of Elections. Actually, I think, since it would be only a local election, I think that would be the Board of Elections, Board of Canversers, excuse me. So I think that from an economic standpoint, the ideal would be to have one polling place with one set of poll workers. Perhaps there might be two, but that would really be a call that would be made by the Board of Canversers.
Any comments on the meeting?
Hearing nothing else? Shall we proceed? Any comments, questions about the two, which may become three, probably? Mr. Martin.
Please have a speaker over there.
Yep. Grab him.
Grand Committee, I think it's going to be a grand circus, but...
Come up and use one of the microphones.
To me, I think there should be some more cons on that...
Will you please identify yourself for those? Thank you.
Number four, the Grand Committee. More cons on that column there, you've got too many cooks, but I would think no accountability should be added to that, because now you've got a group of...another committee, basically they won't be around to address the problems in the budget later on. Another problem is the selection of these members of this new committee. To me, it's going to be kind of funny, zoo. And it's going to be adding another level of government, another committee here, another process. And to me, the last thing, should be another con, is like a conflict. Basically, they'll be voting for their own budgets. If I don't vote for that budget, maybe they won't vote for my budget, and I think there'll be some conflict there.
Thank you. Well-set points. Mr. Martin.
I just wonder how you justify having three town councils and only one for school for it, where what, 60% or 80% of the budget is school funding? You certainly know more about the budget than the town council.
The...again, this is a draft document, and the thought process was that under state law and also by charter and town ordinance, the council is the ultimate financially responsible body. Also, if you look at the charter, it's their job to set town policy and guide the future. Now, you can argue whether that's what they're doing, and there's a lot of folks that argue, but that was our logic. But again, keep in mind, this is not carved in stone. This was a proposal. Any other? I saw another hand. Yes, sir.
Taking into account Peter's comment about too many cooks, when I look at the Grand Committee, there's one...the School Committee has one representative. The schools operate in a kind of autonomous fashion. They get money specifically from the state to run their operation and so forth. There's a much smaller operation in town called the Library, which operates in a similar fashion. And if you're going to put together a bunch of cooks, you might consider having a representative of that particular operation as well.
Yep. And the...not to toot my own horn, but one of the...when we were going through this, one of my thoughts was, indeed, we should have a representative from the Library trustees. The reason that argued against it in my mind, and I didn't push it at all, was that they're not elected, and we were trying to get people that stand for election. But it's a valid point. Hearing seeing nothing? Move on to the next one. I'm not sure that...well, this is the way it is, so they're really...whether we like it or not, that's the way the charter is written now, so pending any changes. And this, again, is trying to address the comments from a variety of people about the length of the process. And I would be particularly interested if anybody is involved in the budgeting process to reflect on whether, from your perspective, it is indeed too long and drawn out of a process, or whether you think it's okay because you have time. Mr. Vermette.
The only comment I'd like to make is sort of to remind you that budgeting is a cyclical process, means it has no beginning and it has no end. So it's not technically correct to talk about it as having a stop and a finish. It goes on year on. Every day, there is something that happens in the budgeting process. And I think you need to solve some of this town's problems in budgeting, you need to look at it that way. And the only thing that varies is at what point in this circle do you cause certain things to happen? But there should never be part of the year where nothing happens.
And if I can, again, summarize and paraphrase Mr. Vermette's statement, he's pointing out the technically correct perspective that budgeting should be 12-month-a-year process, and you should be starting with policies and then looking at how you're going to implement those policies on an ongoing basis. Whereas we tend to treat it, developed over years of practice, we have a start and a stop. And from a pure accounting, financial management standpoint, his point is it should be a continuing cycle, and that the cycle has a point where there's a budget approved, but the second it's approved, you then start thinking again, now, are we going to change direction? Do we have any different strategies, and how can we adjust to take those into consideration? Very valid, but complicated to implement point. Any other comments?
Just one other thing. Earlier in the conversation, you pointed out that the Budget Committee public hearing would be a place where people could have a chance to react and perhaps get some amendments. But I notice when I look at this more closely, you're redundant. You then have the body- You then have the body hold public hearings.
Correct.
Would that, would they be doing the same kind of thing? Would there be possibilities of changes at that later point as well, after the hearings?
Under the presumption that there would be a body, yes. There would be an opportunity for an adjustment. Okay. Hearing and seeing no other comments? I don't think there's, that's what's got to be done. Anybody have anything they would like to add? And you don't have to speak tonight, we're meeting next week. You can come in a smaller venue, do it, or you can give us a written comment, either Hearing, yes, sir.
I have the two other changes that I gave you a copy of, that I'd like to propose.
Why don't you come up and share those, so the TV audience can do it and identify yourself, and I'll...
You'll what? Oh, five minutes, yeah. Okay. My name is Roger Bennis, Narragansett Avenue. I proposed one of these verbally, probably about a month ago, and I don't see it here, so I'll propose it again, and I have a second one that I've proposed to the Town Council over the last 20 years, and they've very cautiously ignored. The two items that I'm requesting for addition to the Town Charter are, number one, is the calculation of the Tiverton Town tax increase for the fiscal year shall not be artificially altered by eliminating any portion of the tax increase from the calculation, regardless of any authorization obtained from the Rhode Island Department of Administration, in accordance with the loopholes established by RIGL 44-5-2D. The second item is, the docket for the Tiverton Financial Town Meeting shall contain an accurate indication of all costs and the total cost for each department. This requirement shall apply regardless of whether the Financial Town Meeting expenditures are approved by the eligible voters of Tiverton or by another authorized body. The reasons are, for item number one, by allowing the artificial altering of the calculation of the maximum allowable tax increase for fiscal year 2008, the actual was allowed to increase 7.25%, an additional 2% increase that will be reflected each year in the future, because this amount, an increase to 107.25% of the FY 2007 tax, will serve as the new starting point for future taxes. In addition, the allowance of this loophole will encourage Tiverton and other Rhode Island cities and towns to allow structures, facilities, and equipment, including cars, trucks, and heavy equipment, to degrade due to the lack of maintenance, as the Tiverton schools have, in order to force purchase of new buildings and equipment using bonds that the Rhode Island Department of Administration will allow to be excluded from the tax increase calculation. This could result in an eventual tax of 4.5% plus an additional 10% or more to fund bonds. Item number two, the Financial Town Meeting docket has for over 20 years or more not accurately reflected the town expenditures of each department. Figures that could be used for comparison against other departments across the state or across the country. The departmental figures have not included the costs for medical benefits, insurance benefits slash costs, pension benefits, and possibly other benefits. These benefits have been extracted from the appropriate departments and listed in the Town Hall budget, without any explanation in the individual departments that would indicate the true cost of individual departments. That's my proposal. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. From a process standpoint, we've gotten his written comments, they will be incorporated in our minutes. The answer to his first question about why his initial proposal to make it that you cannot exclude the bonds is that on advice of legal counsel, we were told we can't do that, because the state law that sets up the cap specifically allows towns and cities to apply for exceptions. So the council, our legal counsel says, we can't trump the state law. Now, the voters, of course, can trump it, because if they don't like exceptions being applied for, they can vote, particularly the Town Council rascals, out of office every two years. So, anything else?
The legal counsel is wrong.
Well, we have to abide by the best advice.
The reason why you get numerous opinions from lawyers is that they're all different, and they are opinions, and opinion being defined as unsupported conclusions.
He had pretty good logic to support his position, but you're correct. It is an opinion, and the only way to really test it is to go to court. And we really weren't in a mood to take the town to court again, since we've spent a lot of money lately going to court. One last comment, I think, because I think I detect people are looking at the clock and winding down.
I'm just questioning the regulatory power of Waste Water Management to vote at the DPW, when Waste Water Management is really not part of the town.
I don't understand the comment. It is part of the town, it's a creature of the town, it's in the charter.
Is there budget?
Yes, yes.
At the town match meeting?
No.
I beg to differ with that.
Because it's handled as a separate item at the Town Council, but it is part of the town. There's absolutely no doubt about it. The contract is between the regional sewer board and the town.
So they can have a separate budget?
They do have a separate budget.
Separate in the town, where the town people have no say about their budget whatsoever? That what you're telling me?
That's a little bit of a, but the short answer is yes. Yes. And the reason that's true is because their budget is a derivative of the fee paid by the people that have sewer service. And several years ago, when I was a mere lad and can barely remember it, there was a court case where it was decided that it could be done that way, and that the whole town, because the issue then was, from a public health standpoint, it ran something like this, and if I'm messing it up, I apologize, it ran something like, waste was a public health issue, therefore, the whole town should pay. People that didn't have sewer service took objection to that, and it was litigated, and that was where the current system does. So the council does have oversight, it is part of the town, it's part of the charter. Now, this lady here, please.
This is Flo Sipple from Haskins Avenue in Tiverton, obviously in Rhode Island.
Would you like a microphone? Grab, grab.
Actually, I have usually big mouths, but...
Remember that you can't get that to the TV audience.
Okay. The two questions I, well, one question, I'm sorry. Flo Sipple. The slide prior to this one and the one after it says that the charter requirements are going to be to decide on a single alternative, and then the next one after that says, finish the Financial Town Meeting alternatives. I guess the question is, and maybe I'm a little confused, is how is that single alternative going to be decided? You presented two this evening, there was another one that was presented again that seems to make some sense. So now, instead of just A and B, we've got an A, B, and a C. How will the final alternative be selected? Is that something that the voters will have an opportunity to do?
No. The nine members are going to have to make that decision.
This charter will do that, this commission will do that.
This commission will do it. Certainly, there is room for public input. And I would ask not only the people that are here, but the people that may be watching on TV, if you like the all-day referendum as our two citizens promoted, then you should let us know. You can write us a letter, you can send Madam Clerk a email, if you're email oriented, any way. You can mail us a letter, you can come to our next meeting and voice your support.
Excellent. Thank you.
Cecil, the next meeting is going to be Judging Street, right?
Yes.
Not here?
Correct. Good point, Richard.
You may want to mention, Cecil, that every first Wednesday of the month is at Judging.
Right. Correct. Normally, we meet every Wednesday here, 7:00. The first meeting of every month, the first Wednesday, we meet at the community center at Judging, still at 7:00. Anybody else? Mr. Bosco? Yes, sir.
Joe Bossom, Mr. Lada?
My not.
Who's here to do that? I kind of like the idea of a Saturday ballot, except that I remember going to town meetings, there's an awful lot of items that are voted on, and it's going to be a lot longer process for each voter to go in to a polling place and fill out this long form, checking yes or no, than just simply voting for the president or the Town Council. It's going to be, have you figured out how much time each voter is going to take in the booth? That's going to be, it's going to be a very onerous process, it seems to me.
Are you talking about the all-day referendum, Mr. Bossom?
Yeah, I think, it sounds like a great idea.
I don't want to speak for Jeff and Cindy, but I think what you'd need to do is you'd either have total municipal, total school, you wouldn't vote on every single line item, you would have some versions that people would vote up or down, but it wouldn't be, correct?
Yes.
It would not be every single item. It would either be a total or maybe total municipal, total schools, and you would just vote on a total number.
Line item. Okay, thanks.
Okay. And for the record, that was Mrs. Joseph Bossom. Hearing and seeing none, I will declare the public part of the forum closed, with my thanks to each and every one of you. I strongly suspect you probably had something better to do tonight, and we really do appreciate your views, and we appreciate the time you took out of your busy lives. Thank you very much.